Oh, I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of our hour seven? Okay, do you want to approve? Carlson, is there a second? Is that called? Any discussion or favors in the same line? I have, you should carry.
I talked to one of the four weeks here recently, yesterday. She said they're, one of their people, what you call the people that are paying the charges at the four weeks, they're, one of the managers, he was, Joe, possibly, he stayed on. He's assessed there, but they were just gonna talk to them.
Do we go in more in-depth in executive session or?
Okay, that's important.
And Miss, Miss Prikus, my daughter.
It's not getting any stealth. How's everybody today?
Good, you, good.
Yeah, I'm playing yet.
It is early.
I don't have anything outside of executives wanting, if you guys have any questions for me. Okay, and I request a, one executive session for personnel. Alright. Rule sheet by Carlson, consent by Sylvan, for executive session, to discuss personnel. All in favor, signify the same line.
Aye.
Anything about me, I mean.
Executive session, okay.
Well, I think Sheriff's gonna win.
It's supposed to be in my heart. Oh.
That just got one of these logs printed off, so. Everybody's under sixty days, so. Yeah, this is the change order? Okay, we got some three, and one, new one for the base, one for, ready. And this is the drawing that changes a lot.
That's a, flattening out that top there?
Yep, this is what I would've had. The dotted line is what I had on. This is the thirteen hundred yards, it's a three thousand yards material that is gonna cross us. Just there.
Sixty-three hundred?
Yeah, sixty-two hundred yards of dirt. This one here up here is where they're gonna keep on these lighties.
Yeah, Dennis, we'll probably give it to you.
What do I get?
I called Robert to tell him that for me.
Oh. Not in that big a hurry, I think.
Oh, but I wanted done, so, you know. I had to thank Robert.
We know where you live.
Passes along?
Oh, everybody's got, oh, I mean, never know, he's getting that one. I wouldn't have planned it, she printed one out, but, uh, okay. Everybody's under sixty days, so. Customers, okay, over that's sixty days.
Good, good. Good news, you'll be there.
Absolutely.
Um, you gonna be gone? This, this little drawing I gave you here, that top one, that solid line, that's what I would've had for pad. That forty foot wide up there. The dotted line I put, you know, that's gonna be the new pad with the existing road coming out. All these dotted lines alongside the road, that's the three thousand yards of material that's gonna be moved. Solid lines are already there.
Basically, double it, more than double the size of the pad, forty feet to fifty to ninety feet.
Get it up to find out if the road, existing road gets on top of that pad. No.
That's a figure of the wall, isn't that?
Yeah. Yep.
Horses, take your guess, thirty grand. Babe's gonna be able to read that down for us?
Ten thousand eight hundred and eight.
Oh, sweet. I might do this. How much does that?
Ten thousand eight hundred and eight. That also, that also consists of, uh, when you take that pipe from our carbon cell, it went to my H A pond. They gotta cover it, well, it's gonna hold water back alongside my pond, which eventually will grow into my pond. So you gotta put a cove in there. Okay, that is a, uh, one thousand eight hundred dollar cost of the pipe. And one thousand two hundred dollar cost to salt.
That's, that's included?
Yep.
It's included?
Yep.
In the ten thousand eight, sorry.
Just go like that, a little bit, so you can see. And then, down here, and if you look at, if you look at this drawing again, there's that manhole. It shows, it shows it right down here being lifted. Okay, the existing one is eight feet up from now and just barely out of the ground. We're gonna add ten feet to that and bring it up out of the ground so that it gets sorted out. And that is eight hundred dollar cost. Six thousand three hundred dollar cost is the movement of that three thousand yards of, uh, tape, you know, that landing. I would have three of these on.
I don't need one.
You see it, bigger than George Henry's?
Yeah, yeah. It's a fifteen hundred dollar cost of that three thousand cubic yards, uh, to place to come back. Plus, that total is that ten thousand eight hundred and eight. That, that is, you know, that, Larry says down here, it's all gonna be, this is gonna be definitely in the ballpark area. But a quick change road or a quick go higher depends on, because they're gonna do it by survey. They survey it down, and then after Roseville, they let them left, well, survey again, assume the material they actually paid for it. But he's estimated to be three thousand yards.
So are we having additional bills and holding them, too?
I suppose he might be charging a little bit for doing it, not.
We run along clay, haven't we?
We're being short.
Are you looking at all these plate piles around it? Just the different areas are always, no one wanted that crap. All of a sudden, it's a hot commodity, these piles are just digging back farther and farther.
All the digging, the rocks. Everybody wants rock.
They actually go down, far down there, they're hitting water there.
That's what you mentioned.
Little water standing there, huh?
Try on, take a look at that, I mean, before they start putting garbage in there, see what it looks like. It's gotta be pretty impressive, I think it is.
Need a motion for authorization to sign, please? Ten thousand?
Okay, we have three, one got signed. Uh, one for you, two, I need you to take that, one for Bates, one for.
We got two, Mr.. Did you have the third one right there?
No, right over there. Right there, two? This one is a plate record, this is that drawing.
Oh, okay, hundred, not. Oh, this is a fourth copy.
Okay. Well, we just had that pulled up.
We got a motion by fate, authorization to sign, please? And then two, that second, all three of you, five percent line.
Aye.
Aren't they gonna be completely done?
No. The nature's wrong down now.
Yeah.
It's raining, huh?
Yeah. But it shouldn't take them long, I think it'd be better.
See, they run a different scraper down there the other day.
It's, it's not really a scraper, it's water.
Oh, water, wasn't it?
Oh, water.
Okay.
Go ahead and get water in there. Water dripping, it's slacking on there, and you can't even, uh.
Sure.
Alright, okay. Look at what I, we don't need it now.
Skip called me, I should've thought of prevent power, I mean, he said, yeah, I didn't really wanna have to do that, but. I need two of them, you know, for you guys. Both signed. And basically, that's all I have to comment for, just continue to believe.
What about our advance statement?
Um, I haven't got any further than what I told you last meeting, I said I talked to that Travis and Bruce. I did talk to, um, Steve Fenson out here about portable building.
Oh, yeah?
He said he's built them before.
Really?
Like, uh, he said that's pretty precise, I'm quoting by thirty, on fourteen, it's got a garage over there, six inches of sidewalk. But he said he'll put something together, he, he, yeah.
And then those policy things, we talked about, did they go out as a billionaire recently, or has a billionaire not going on against the orders?
Oh, I, uh, I just, okay, all that, I had to, you make sure these get prepared.
Okay.
But I do have them out there.
Okay, so probably go out this, next one's building, alright, good, I'm curious if you got any feedback, so.
Alright.
Okay, well.
Thanks, Peter.
You have, have a good day.
Thank you.
Come on, everybody.
Hey, how we doing? See if we can't change that.
Oh, yeah?
Someone changed ours, this is the only time we've changed yours.
I'm running low on diesel fuel today, uh, with, uh, in the county yard, so I did bids on transport. I sent it out last, yesterday, last night, for eight o'clock this morning. We're sending up the bids to Big CHS, Stilsons, and Harms Oil, and we've only got one bid this morning, most Stilsons. Um, the other ones did bid, I did get an email from CHS about quarter after eight, and said it would've been around two twenty-four, but then it was like eight thirty, because they couldn't get it in in time, and it would've been higher anyway. Because what we do is, we got Stilson who bid this morning, and it is two dollars seventeen, seven fourteen, which means, uh, seventy-three hundred gallons is fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-three twelve. One of them's about seven almost eight cents from yesterday, I guess. I didn't know it was climbing yesterday, but I did send this out yesterday. And, uh, so we got the one bid, and I'll just take that, but if you guys want approval, that's fine. So you can just bid it out when I need it, so. Two thousand, over two thousand nothing, the number one tank, and we gotta fill it, and get filled up again, we won't get low, because otherwise, my lines will be going out from that tank. And we only got four thousand in the other one, so. Usually, when they both get low enough to get seventy-five hundred seventy, we bid it out and get it, so. That's what we got today.
You call it the number one tank, because we got number two.
Right, it's all number two, and everyone's number one tank, yes, I got a south end and a north. Yeah, we got all, some are filling there, and half of them.
No, we should approve that bid from Stilson, but send that back to Carlson. And they are sixty-five percent line.
Aye.
Actually carries.
So we did get the center line painted last week, got all of our roads done, and most of them that we, all of them that we had in the map, so. That was the man home, and most of it's covered, elevated to a fresh out of. Excuse me?
How many miles it ended?
Out of forty-seven miles, but he doesn't have the bill, and I don't know why he ended up to bid.
I just give her.
Because I told him to skip, you know, some of the stuff, so that we didn't have to be living in, you know, completely. Where we had asphalt laid here, and I'm just gonna do the asphalt over the map. We traced a bunch of stuff that I didn't leave you done, you know. But it was still gonna be there, a lot higher this year, that's what.
Oh, good.
So that's done, the bridge replacement on County Road Three is done, and that was two hours in last week. Looks really good, everything done, we got the fencing and the, and the signage back up yesterday, because we had to put the fence back up. Um, looks really good, so, got that bridge up completed, so eventually, that money, that four hundred dollar one, that project could be a separate project. With the Bill, Stilsons, Ralston, gives me a bill for excavating, collect the B D M for that. That's all gonna come onto that one fund, but you know, that's gonna be after money's transferred later, and all this other stuff.
We did that, did that.
Uh, no, Ralston did the excavating up there, so, he's right close by, and so he did that, so that's done. Um, we're working on the five-year bridge plan yet, but Don and I have, uh, got some stuff, we're gonna be sending stuff, the first estimate they probably made yesterday.
Christina said that everything looks good, so she'll be sending the stuff back.
Did you talk to, after she talked, uh, see that, and, uh, I didn't know, they had come up with that for your calls.
So we'll be having the hearing on a five-year bridge plan on, on September seventh.
Uh.
I've got the letters sent off to the townships, so they're all aware.
So that'll be coming up for a little bit.
Reveal, so.
Working on that. Um, and then, uh, I guess we're just, gonna be doing some patching it up, but you have to did today, and then, uh, we used the road grimmer yesterday up on, by, uh, Mr. Miguel, it's up there on twenty-one, and so I'm sure he gets something to say. We're gonna be moving down, but the salt cars won't want here next, towards the end of the week, hopefully, when we get caught up with some other stuff.
Working, you do?
Yeah, we're just really good after the rains and.
You go to the practice or you to the truck?
Both of the tracks, yeah. So, try to keep on that as much as you can, we're shorter guys, we got a couple guys going in between, and we're trying to do that, continue after the rain, so. Gets me a lot, but you guys, you know what I'm saying, so. So, we had that little meeting, we had here, Don and I, with, uh, with our rural access infrastructure inventory training. Um, planning on going to the convention in September, so, I'm fast footin' on work, training with their infrastructure. We do have the forms, the two different forms, and Tammy ran off about twenty at Apple Beach. So we do have a bunch of stuff kinda getting ready for that.
Okay.
And we're, we're gonna need a little more info to figure out how we're gonna do it, right? So we did have a good meeting with Don and I up here, on, uh, that guy in the meeting, so.
It was on, it was on video.
Oh, here, okay.
So Pat and I, we're in attendance.
Yeah, so. That truck has L T A P representative on there, went over through it. L T A P is gonna be doing training for that, so, and stuff kinda keeping up to date for us, and then we'll be working with L T A P. And of course, um, with whatever else we need to on that, so it's gonna be a lot of work. You know, we got thirty, thirty, uh, townships.
Thirty townships.
I don't know how we're gonna be covering everybody's little culverts, I mean, we might be able to get some of these townships to give us. They could get the forms and film on, you know, we can get it if they get it, if they get them. Um, and then, I don't know how we're gonna pay that, how that pay is going out, though, because we talked about some counties are gonna have, like myself, or a couple guys will go do these inventories, they will get paid, they, they end up, it costs them only do an hour, whatever, and then get paid for going out and doing them, out of that money that you can save. I mean, how else are you gonna do it, ain't fair, although.
Because we have sixty-eight dollars.
Sixteen dollars, so whether you're hiring some of it down there, whether we do it. So the inventory's gonna be spent for that, one way or the other, whether we do it with a county entity, or maybe we might be able to do a few structures with an engineer or something, who knows? That's gonna be determined, what you guys, how we're gonna wanna do that. Because I can't spend two hundred and fifty hours a week doing all this stuff, you know.
And the inventory, are they, are they looking for a whole inventory, or just those that need repair?
Well, everything over that sixteen square feet, and that would be anything that's four and a half feet diameter, and bigger up to under twenty feet. So some of these townships, like down by, uh, yeah, there's a lot of structures, you know, called it, is that way.
But do they want the whole inventory, or just those that might need repair?
Just the ones that are in repair, where you located it, not the whole township, remember, you know.
Right, yeah.
Just the ones that qualify for four and a half feet or sixteen square feet, or, you know, that fifty-four inch, so. Anything bigger than a hundred and twenty-foot bridge, so that's the requirement.
So the townships have to either have an opto in place, or be up to the fifty cents, three thousand, on Senate Bill one?
Correct.
For one year, or all eight? All four years? That particular year, it was a year of funding.
Yes, that was one of the criteria we learned yesterday, yes, so. With the legislation, and trying to keep things on, and whatever they, whatever their rules are gonna change, they don't matter now.
See, I guess, this is the part that I understand, can we agree that, I mean? One, one comes to mind, is probably the four they have with diameter, I mean. We don't know how to go inspect it, to look at it, to see if it's like, you know, constantly water running through there, so is it all rusted up, we don't know.
Well, in those.
You're supposed to walk through with a stick, with that pole.
You have to know the road, with the width of the road, is it maintained, is it not maintained, is it, uh, is it a road code, or is it middle maintenance? All that's questions in there, what's the traffic, and where's it located, that kind of deal, and there's so much questions. For each one without answer.
And that'll be on, on form that we got to fill up.
Yep, there's two different forms that are already been down, established.
Yeah.
And you have to fill out those forms, so you have on to do that, it's where the location is, all that stuff should have been. You know, when was it installed, if you knew that, or not.
Yeah, see, that, that's.
What's the pipe, what does the structure look like, what is it, what trade is it in?
Yeah.
So it does have all that criteria for it to fill out.
But again, it's, it's tough for towns, it's only answers those questions.
Not tough for us to get around it.
Well, yeah, yeah, I, I.
Oh, my God.
I'm in the push.
For these six thousand dollars of going around with thirty townships, it just happens, part of it.
And that's all the money we're gonna give?
For the school, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's just to get.
For the inventory.
To get the inventory, and that, that'll make the determination of that three million.
Right.
How much is gonna go to that?
Then they'll determine how much three million that will, see, by what we put in. The more you put in, the more money you get back for construction. But what do you think you're gonna give for construction, thirty townships, and how much?
Yeah, not much.
Not much. I mean, you look at the cost, the bike that goes up now, and the cost of everything, and you got a, three million dollars going up for six, six dollars. I mean, it's just all ludicrous in my mind, but what do I, you know. So these guys are out there, you know, the legislation is, you know, giving out to the dollars, thinking this is gonna be like whole, and it's really gonna be a minimum. What's gonna happen after all these hours of work being done? I think it would've been a lot better, you know, if they would've did like they did before, but maybe I mean, that, so many hundreds of thousands of dollars from each county, we won't do this, do the repairs that's needed, and it's a done deal, but they made this thing to, they feel, because it has to be safe, everyone coming out of it, you gotta have all this extra stuff, you know how that feels, but that's kinda what it is, so. I ordered signs, extra signs for County Road Fourteen, which haven't come in yet. Um, we're gonna be hauling that as soon as we can this week, and then the week maybe, and then that'll all get cleaned up. I did drive it the other day, though, it's still pretty soft, and we're gonna have to put some extra rip wrapped in on the west side, so when the wind blow, the dome blow, and it's still soft, you know. Um, but we're gonna be bringing some material in there to pack it in and work it a little bit, so it gets, because technically, it's not real safe to be driving, um, without the signage, and without, you know, getting the work done, that needs to be done right now.
Signage, it's just loose gravel, it doesn't, doesn't take out all the one ways traffic or.
And then the barricades were, barricades were thrown in the ditch, and now we only have the one barricade with water on the road, just for a little bit of signage, and it's still pretty dangerous. Um, so as soon as we get that signage, get that done, it's still not gonna be very, uh, good down there where the water is, and how soft that is, so.
Did, did any fresh gravel get put on there? He, he said he was gonna bring three lots of gravel.
There is nothing to put on there, that is.
Okay, uh, the other thing, I was down there the other day, I looked at it myself, and, uh.
Yeah.
I wonder if those crops, if those crops get taken off the, off the field, there's a couple decent-sized rock piles close by there.
Yeah.
Do those farmers let you?
See, we, yeah, we probably talked to my father when he get the car and things out, yes, because we've done, you know, and we've raised it over the years. When we were surrounding, grounds were all on the west side, we took the whole hill off and built it up, and used the. When it's around, rounds rolls out of the sign, we took the whole hill off and built it up, and used the clay, you know, and... But yeah, we've used rock on there many a times over there, we, we went and used rock all around there when we built those before, so, yeah, that's an option.
There's gotta be a culvert that goes in between those two, isn't there? It just, it's probably down so low. To me, Pat, it looks like one side of that.
Yeah, we've had culvert on one side.
This goes higher than the east side.
Yeah.
Is that possible?
Um, it can be if, it can be plung, but I don't know if it is plung.
There's more than a year's.
Yeah, the, the, they're all not culvert, I'm just wondering because.
Again, that's a culvert there, huh?
No, um, there was a culvert installed there last time we raised it, Ralph Stepp put it in, yes. And we had an equalizer plate in there, so. But then, you know, the bad part is when the wind blows and blows and blows, it just keeps working, so. And we're gonna have to maintain it as little as possible.
It's that first one, that, that one was built up a lot.
Yeah, and see.
Into that second one as well.
The first one won't, won't ever draw up, because we've got culverting at all, too, so, so. But then the next one up, that has equalizer plate, but that can rise, 'cause it can't go nowhere either, that's been on top of the road too, so. But anyway, that's ongoing, that's.
There's a blank car across there.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's a little soft.
You can go.
Where the, where the blade.
Yeah.
Get the north end, but there's.
On the north end, if you get over too far, it's soft, or if you get over too far in the middle, it'll be a little soft, so.
You had your leg taken, huh?
Yeah, no.
So, see, Wes may put a middle trap out there now, too.
Well, one of our guys, Joey does that for aside, you know, he does those, Joey's been trapping up there all winter and all, all summer.
Yeah.
So, but it is deep, and it's, but it's not real, it's not real firm yet, I mean, if you aren't working it, get that back there, it's gonna be soft. Well, even if we get another three inches of rain, that's just gonna be sloppy. You know, and then the rain, then it might get enough where it's gonna blow again, you know. Alls it takes is a few inches of rain to bring that up over a rock again on the west side, and it'll start, start blowing and eating it away again, you know, so. Um, the only thing, the last thing I had was, um, we did talk about the budget here a couple of weeks ago. And I completely, you know, wasn't thinking about some of the stuff we were doing next year, too, is we're out of gravel, crushed gravel next year also. And that's another reason why I had a little more money in the materials is because of the crushed gravel. And I forgot to tell you guys about that the last time we talked about, just wanna give that information to you. We only have a thousand ton left in C G L, and we're also building down in Orange. Orange will be down almost too, we only got a little left. We did that approach last week, I did so on Thursday, so that got a little bit of gravel there. So that's done, but our gravel has, you have to give them a gravel next year as a milestone.
Is it that question?
And if you don't get at least ten, twenty thousand ton that's here, sure, just to get by, you know. There's no way we can do a hundred thousand dollars worth, but I mean, you can get another, another, uh, small pile crushed in these, you know, in these couple of bits, so. That's another cost, 'cause we're completely out again.
Of course, that gets this fall, will that come in the spring or?
No, it'll have to be next year, 'cause we don't have the budget, so it'll have to be either bid up by us or blow off, take it back, bid on somebody like next year, which is impossible. 'Cause last year was like two twenty-five, and I don't know what it'll be next year. And I know down there by Oma, we can't go in that other pit no more unless we decide. 'Cause, uh, um, Cody Simpson has the, has the pit now, so you have to get it through. So it's already crushed, and you can load it, they're gonna be paying a dollar for it instead of crushing, instead of the crushed dollar.
Then, Gary used to do that, just this, uh...
Yeah, yeah, I'm a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, is that, can, can you get gravel from him or don't?
Can I?
Can you get gravel from him, or is that?
Uh, we, we got a haul road agreement right now, and he's gonna be putting a thousand ton on the road right there.
Okay, I just, I mean, he did our township stuff, but it's good gravel.
Yeah.
The way he spreads it out is so, he's got a blade on the back of his truck, and it was, he's.
Oh, yes, it sort of spreads out.
Yeah, he spread it out, I mean, we, he ended up doing almost solid.
Oh, yeah.
Because he did it so thin, but, but appropriately thin, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, we were really impressed with what he did, and it seemed to be really good gravel.
Yeah, we have a haul road agreement right now, before he started in there, and before he got in there and started jamming up the roads, and I got a haul road agreement. He's gonna be putting a thousand tons on there.
Okay.
And then he's gonna keep it loaded, when he does. And then we were planning on buying a thousand, we were talking, we were gonna get a couple of inches on there from the lake road up to the north for two miles. So that was the plan, and that may not be down until this, the fall.
Yeah.
'Cause he hasn't gone in there and done that yet.
See, I've been hauling all this stuff from there, just to a.
So that's why he's been behind in that stall road here when we have to do it, so. That followed up today, I guess.
Eastman rode behind the bridge in the, in the tip ceiling, the new stripey, like a million bucks, looks good, early day.
Yeah, thank you, I always. Nice. You know, I told the guys before, too, you know, when they're out there, they take pride in it, you know.
Well, were you, were you, uh, resweet the gravel on the end of the road into the center, or are you done?
No, we're just sweeping it out, it goes in the center, it won't stick anymore, that's just the way it is, so we just get rid of it, so.
I went through, I went through C G L when I was on my tour, and, uh, is Game Fish gonna get their end of the deal done? I mean, they're coming on, the tourist.
It's all Marshall counties though, they did Marshall County, once they get oil.
Five hundred to a thousand cars a day rolling through there, it's not gonna be good, they, they need to get on the ball.
Yeah, see, I told him, I said, we want that, as soon as they get it done, if you wanna get that fog sealed, then there's no, nowhere in sight. 'Cause they haven't started on none of that over there, so. I haven't talked to Game Fish. I can talk to, uh, Mr. Hoffman, he's in charge of the engineering, and I can talk to the superintendent, Marsha Tom, I'll talk to Dustin and see how far we're going, see where they're at.
They, they said, well, they were gonna need some other improvements, you know what the other improvements were? They put up, I think, three solar powered lights and a credit card deal. So you walk in there and drive in and you wanna use the part, you gotta pay.
Well, is that what it is?
And there's no, and there's no cement post to protect that machine, it's all, they're all solar powered, sure sells you if you're running. So if I steal it, oh, it's just credit cards, and if I enter it or not? They won't accept cash.
The last time we, we've roomed at.
Eighteen dollars a day or something like that, so much we can buy the annual pass, you know, that stuff, but.
Yeah, we had Martin room it the last time, now I'm roomed at Off Green, so that we didn't get fog sealed, and then, uh, we have that project sitting there on Cam's desk waiting to finish it, so. Until we get the fog sealed and get those things done, we don't have a, the, you know, the door calls, so.
You're kind of taking us to task on that, no, we're, uh, we're gonna fill them back.
Right.
So a hundred percent of the cost.
We'll be done on, once we get the total cost, we still have that fog sealed, pay for it, and then once we get our cost, then we'll send them to go. So, but I'll let you know what it is first, and we'll hold it, and then, then we can get on with that. But I'll get an update from Marsha Tom and see what happens. Thank you.
I have a question on this appeal, is it being taken out of jail supplies area, is this something that, uh, you know?
Which one is that, that evaluation?
Sexual assessment?
Yeah, that one, you know, is it insurance requested, or, I mean, I'm just questioning what the budget is coming out of.
I see, I have this view, I didn't know.
Was it part of a court thing, or what?
Probably should be court appointed, attorney.
Well, no.
And that one is not eligible for reimbursement thing, because they're not a member of, of, uh, that thing that we can get reimbursed for. But I've, I've contacted Carly at Green County, she's gonna talk to Don Sanders, because apparently he uses that group a lot, but they're not in on that.
Yeah, I see, so whoever ordered it should be aware that it should utilize one of the providers that are on the list.
Um, Carly's going to talk to Sean Sanders, because, because that's, I mean, he's basically out of the county. And Hanga talked about self-possessed retirement, we can do it that way. I, I called, I called him, and we can just set it up, we need to write a letter and, you know, have it connected.
What's the contribution, what do you keep down, or the normal way to be? Well, they're pretty generous, I'm surprised they allow you to do that, honestly.
And it's either that the employee didn't pay her share, and the county share, or the, or the county wants to pay their share, just like we do. It's kind of up to us, we need to write a letter stating how we want it.
Should we call you later and say?
This morning, you hear me, is that true?
No, no, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm misple, I'm misple, I'm not even supposed to be here, Tom's not here, so.
Why, they're requesting the computer, they're, they're replacing?
They're replacing, they're replacing, they're, they've been in a lot of trouble with their computers.
So is it one computer, I get really lost there?
One computer, one monitor, and then some boss, I don't know. Yeah, that seems pretty reasonable, next to many of ours at two thousand bucks, so.
Any other questions on?
Wait a minute, I didn't make it.
Is there a motion to approve thirteen sixty-four, Treasurer's Office? Carl, so a second, by example, I want to be able to say that I'm, I'm portioned here.
Yeah, so I went to, for my personal computer. And then they set me up with the printer scanner.
You're fine.
So I can start putting my, um, whatever I wanna do, I'm on it, sitting in.
You plan for your retirement already?
Yep.
Got a year and a year and four months to go.
Now she is longer, because the auditors are.
March first, yeah, they're, or January. Dan, so you're still planning on going to the convention, aren't you?
Yeah, can I take the new car?
Yes.
And I should reserve it for me, because I think it was going, oh, hell, get the reserve. Jill said something about you just needed to be taken down.
Maybe, maybe take the van, maybe?
Yeah.
That's usually where.
That's what I was thinking, but she said car, but I, I made it van.
Yeah, you'll be.
It's like the thirteenth and fourteenth.
Thirteenth and fourteenth, yeah.
Maybe I'll run a meeting that day.
I'm trying to get ahold of Tom to see if he's still planning on going.
And then rapid or suppose?
Rapid, so Mark's going to go too, but Mark has to stay an extra day.
Uh, we might be taking more than one vehicle, 'cause I might make a little vacation out of it then.
Oh, good.
Mary had talked about going too, so.
Okay, well, then you wanna take your own vehicle and sit in?
Probably. Said that, I'll be hard, that's right, safety, safety, both speed. Well, it does, huh? Dicks in the heart. I can't get her to go around the block on the motorcycle.
She's actually, we all ride around that, she's not, she's not enthused, let's see.
So do you, so then, why don't you guys talk and let me know before Thursday? Um, if she is planning on doing any of the spouse events?
Okay.
For the lunch or that.
I can handle it, I'll check over there.
Okay, why don't you let me know? 'Cause we've got the spouse guest.
My boy, I know, oh.
So, I bet it, I bet.
Same root as death.
Get this in by, I don't know, it's all, all of a sudden like it's been there.
I've got roofs for you. Yeah.
American, yeah.
Okay.
But I'll see if I'm this, I'm doing, I'm doing. And then we'll approve the, approve it next week.
Sounds good.
And then Pat's gonna also go. And I'm over at East Bay, Tammy was calling for a group yesterday, so.
Oh, that, oh, we have a great group out there, that's like, that's a party.
And then we have the local emergency management grant, where they pay back our fifty percent of our expenses.
And they always.
So there is a new agreement.
Did they get cut or not? What they, they always, which one?
Well, that's the pot, is this for one year, or for what period of time is this?
For one year, October first.
Okay. Any work back on the pot expenses?
Not yet, I did touch base, I'm working with, uh, what's her name now? If, they've kinda had changes on like our jail, doesn't it?
Good morning.
You can't tell us anything bad today.
I'm not believing promises.
Walk out the door, man, right now.
Nobody talked to state's attorney.
Yeah.
I don't think I have anything that's really bad.
Yes, you do.
Well, maybe not great. I just, I went to Nestle, so.
Yeah, and you guys to the category of.
Lot of lots of stuff. Three, and then we get these two, so, let me pack up.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right. Our jail census is fifty-nine. Uh, you can see we're, just in the last couple of days, we've gone from, I think, we were at fifty last week when I was here, up to seventy, and now we're back down to fifty-nine, so we've been kind of evident flown pretty, pretty quickly. I talked to you guys, uh, last week about the Alexis Nexus contract, that was the group that's gonna put the federal, um, statute books on our devices that the inmates, that the inmates have. Do you wanna talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, basically, it allows for, inmates have access to pretty much any legal materials if they need to prepare for a case, and get to some unconstitutional guarantees, that they have access to all legal materials. And it prevents their lawyers, if they're in park or, or marshals, to have to send this stuff in the mail, graceless paper for the jails.
Those are state and federal statutes, then, right?
Yeah.
They don't have access to.
Yep.
It's a legal database, they can search any case, I mean, anything they need.
It's kinda like we have, we're being for that, our computer dome and the court, the court's office.
Yeah.
Uh, for people who go in, in jail.
So inmates have a base on court, these textures, right?
They will, they pay per call, per text, like video call, per text, I believe, any, any, um, anything with Alexis Nexus. Anytime they use that, there's a fee for that too, so it'll generate.
Do you have an idea, what has been, you know, we have paid out, and we have got the universal inmates, you have any idea on that?
No, but I can, yeah, those come on our, on our commissions reports, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, it's a. Uh, it's approximately, just guessing, it's, I would say between video calling and text messages, we probably make about three thousand dollars a month.
Eighteen hundred is what I'm, more than that, it's about.
That eighteen hundred, that eighteen hundred, I'm kind of here.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's, so it's about, it, it goes between about twelve hundred dollars and sixteen hundred dollars, um, both text, calls, and.
And this thing.
And, yeah, and then we also did increase our work release fees, uh, the county, for our county holds, it went from twenty dollars to thirty dollars a day, and out of county it went from, I think, sixty up to ninety.
So they've done a pretty good job.
Do we have any other work through these help?
No, I'm, I'm in. So, but the out of coun, but the out of council, which have to pay in advance to, for housing and for things in the day. All right, so that's, that's all the good news.
So, do you need a motion to?
I, I didn't know if you guys wanted to do a motion to, to sign the contract.
We didn't approve it last week, couldn't we?
No, yeah.
They wouldn't affect January, they would affect now, or?
I think they're getting, I think they're gonna try to get a settlement, so they got the contract back, and be within ten days, take about ten days to build it up, and they look at it and.
Motion to approve, several seconds, I will sign. Need further discussion, all in favor, she was on the same night, if she cares.
Um, so I'm sure you're aware that Janessa Miller did decide to take the position in Travis County, um, so that will leave a big hole for us to fill in our entire facility. Um, she was going to be here today, she's gonna be here, um, she is gonna come to the commission meeting next Tuesday, I believe the person whose position she's filling for the last two days were Monday, Tuesday, so she was over there yesterday, today, kind of taking as much as she could of all.
Sure, what's your last day?
Uh, last day of the month. So, uh, she, she has, you know, offered to spend as much time, I think, probably over the next couple months, maybe towards the end of the year, um, coming in and training whoever she's, whoever's going to be replacing her, uh, so we'll probably need to take a look at what we'll, you know, have her stay on as a part-time, as a part-time basis, I don't know, she hasn't given me a definite on what that timeline will, will be, but, you know, she's coming back and willing to help us, you know, ease that transition, it's probably in her best interest to take advantage of.
You have any viable candidates for her position, or?
Uh, we do, we do have.
Is that something you suggested?
I just, I don't need to know, I just wanted to answer.
We just think that you're gonna, you're gonna wanna advertise if you have somebody in house that we, so, man.
Yeah, so, um, and that's something I was, I was gonna just bring up, we do have some potential applicants from inside the facility, um, and a couple that have come with her, with her recommendation, um, but I was under the impression that it's something that we, that we may have to, I'm not sure if it's something that we have to advertise for or, or not.
What's that?
Before, before we advertise, um, you know, it, it may be, and that's where probably the rest of our discussion this afternoon will probably go, is, you know, what that starting pay is gonna, is gonna look like. Well, right now, she was at.
Seventeen seventy-four?
Yes.
Seventeen seventy-four?
I called and talked to, um, the Dade County Sheriff, because I know that they just, he had just done some, uh, some negotiating on their, on their dispatching, overall dispatching of wages, and done some comparisons in the nearby areas, and our, uh, water town, and things like that. Just to give you a general idea, how they, how they do theirs, is they have their part-time, uh, dispatchers starting at seventeen dollars an hour, uh, and these are uncertified. If they work, I think, over thirty hours, less than forty hours, they pay them eighteen an hour, and if they're full time, they get nineteen with a dollar shift differential, ten p.m. to eight a.m., so, it's the, give us a general, a general idea of what we're, what we're up against.
How big a staff do they have there, total number?
Uh, I believe Ryan told me they are at five.
So dispatchers, five, so they don't do any nine-one-one, they, they dispatch, do they have ambulance?
Yes.
And their, and their, their safety?
Yes.
Okay.
See, I think that's, you know, where we're at with the, the rest of everything, um, just to give you a general idea, I went through, uh, our, when, when I started in January, um, since the January timeframe, we have lost one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine jailers.
What's full staff?
Well, technically, we're budgeted, we're budgeted for about twenty-two, we're down to eleven. We're losing one possibility to this.
So we have time for detective sessions, so.
Discuss personnel.
Is there a motion for that, Detective Carroll, soon?
Is there? I'm, I'm lost right now, or, do we have to, are we stipulated how many correctional officers we need? Per, you know, like, or the juveniles or anything, that goes with our accreditation? Is there any?
There's no, there's no stipulation on how many you need, there, the back is off the, there's no standardized correctional guidelines, at all.
Okay.
I tend to go off a ratio inmate to officer ratio.
Okay, which is?
To run our facility with seventy-four inmates, full capacity, if, normally I'd say about twenty, to run it effectively, if you had five or six people on shift to cover everything, but if I, I'm doing that this next month, I'm changing it to a twelve-hour shift, that way there's better coverage, and I can do the same job with your officers hired, so if we had a whole fifteen officers, I think that would, get down to twenty-two, twenty-two to fifteen a week.
So what's the ratio, you make to correctional officer?
Right now?
No. What?
I'd, I'd say, I'd say, I, I prefer five inmates, or, I'm sorry, five jailers per shift, which would be seventy-five.
Okay. One correctional officer to how many inmates?
Four, fifteen, fifteen.
One, okay, so, one to fifteen, that's, okay, that's what I want, okay. Are we going to executive?
We have a session. I have to put Johnson, all in favor, signify the same, I, I, I'm motioned to carry it.